Please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of the public testimony is as follows. Any, any in person, anyone in person with council chambers and then anyone who has raised their hand, their virtual hand. Neil, how many people do we have joining us?
We have approximately 10 participants online and a room full of Thurston Colts in the chambers.
I believe that is a scientific term.
It's like a shake a stick at.
Yeah, yes, first item, please.
First item, you have two items under Springfield upbeat. Item number one is a mayor's recognition. That's the June 2023 LGBTQ plus Pride Month proclamation and mayor, this is your item.
All right. So whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of that promise has been long coming for many Americans. Whereas the historical riot at Stonewall in New York City on June 28th, 1969 is considered a turning point for LGBTQ liberation in the United States. Whereas for more than 50 years, June has been celebrated as LGBTQ plus Pride Month nationwide in honor of the LGBTQ plus citizens who fought discrimination laws at Stonewall. Whereas June has become a nationally recognized moment to celebrate and honor the way LGBTQ plus Americans have overcome adversity and enriched our society. Whereas Springfield celebrates and honors its diverse LGBTQ community that includes people of all races, ethnicities, and religions and professions. Whereas the city of Springfield strives to be a community where everyone is welcome. For our differences rather than limited by what may divide us. I Sean Van Gordon, the mayor of the city of Springfield hereby proclaim June 2023 to be LGBTQ plus Pride Month. In recognition and celebration of the many ways in which history and cold in the history and the culture of LGBTQ plus Americans and advancements, discoveries, achievements, LGBTQ plus Americans have contributed to the history, culture and social fabric of the nation and the city of Springfield. All right. Next item, please.
And next item is recognition of the 2023 Thurston Colts baseball team, your 2023 five A state champions.
Well, I will compliment Counselor Blackwell for her ability to wrangle the, this herd of Colts here on a short notice. I've got some facts to read and then I'm going to invite the coach up and then we're gonna, we're gonna take a big group picture together. We'll, we'll bring Joe up in the background so he still, he makes it all the pictures. So tonight we're recognizing and congratulating the Thurston Colts for their OSAA five A state championship win. The number two ranked Colts played the number four ranked West Albany, West Albany over the weekend. This deciding run was a rare inside the park homerun by freshman Grady Saunders. It's Grady here. Well done, sir. Well done. Thurston also earned all league honors this season with Maddox Maloney named a Midwestern League Player of the Year. Connor Maloney, the Midwest League Pitcher of the Year and Thurston head coach Dennis Minimon, then M W L Coach of the Year. Entire team works hard on the field, in the community and in the classroom. We are extremely proud of your, your accomplishments, both on the field and off the field this year. Congratulations so much. Now, we're going to have Dennis up to give a few comments. I warned him exactly 37 seconds ago. So he's going to keep us entertained for the next 10 minutes. Right up here. I'm right up here. And you've got to say your name and you know. How you guys are feeling?
My name is Dennis Minion, D E N N I S M I N I U N. These guys have worked extremely hard all year. We came in in the offseason, losing in the quarterfinals last year was tough. We had a goal last year, didn't get to it. Came into the offseason, they all showed up every single day, worked extremely hard, had a goal this year. We went down to Arizona over spring break, lost a couple of games down there. We finished year winning 27 in a row. And due to their hard work and dedication to our program and the coaches' hard work. We ended our goal, we ended the season with our goal of winning a state championship.
Well, we're really proud of you guys.
Thank you.
It, it's been a great story this, this month to watch. Well, and through, through the month of May to watch too.
Yeah, yeah.
So congratulations. We're going to have you guys up here and we're, we're going to take a giant group picture.
Also Connor Maloney was the five A pitcher of the year in the state of Oregon. And Maddox was the player of the year in state of Oregon.
All right, guys, come on up. Bring the trophy.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, wow. Look at that.
Calm down, guys.
So that bad boy up here. Let's see if I don't knock this in. We're going to have to get cozy.
So Marcus was our bad boy all year.
Well, I figured we could put them in.
You know, city councillor.
Are we all fit or do we have to come?
It's gonna get a little bit tighter.
Act like you guys like. That'd be good. Yeah, I ended up a little bit more, guys. Joe tighten it up a little bit more. Awesome. All right, let's get a number one for the champs. All right, we're good. Well, this one's going in the, going, going into my office and all the other, you know, with all the other great things I pick up over the years. So I'm going to text you guys a picture where it's going to go.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. All right, is there any coming back from that much fun? Next item, please.
Consent calendar is your next item.
Well, let's give them about 30 more seconds. They're still. All right.
Second.
All right, Neil, could you call a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
I.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Motion passes six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
The next item is public hearings. You have one public hearing tonight. That's the master fees and charges. This is resolution number two. A resolution amending master fees and charges scheduled chapters one through 10 with an effective date of July 1st, 2023. Nick Riolo is here for the staff report.
Thank you, Neil. Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. Here this evening for the public hearing for master fees and charges and resolution to adopt or not to adopt. Before we begin the hearing, I would like to note a change that occurred after the 522 work session. There was talk about the business license late fees. And what we ended up doing is we removed the flat fee, the flat $10 fee. So now it is just 10% per month. And that is of the business license base fee. So the $10 per month flat fee has gone away based on the feedback. That's what I have for you.
All right, any questions before I open the public hearing? All right, then I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item. Neil, do you have anybody online?
It does not appear we have any hands.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Pictionary. Wait, hang on. Victoria's got a question.
Victoria. Just a quick question. We did take care of the comprehensive planning fee that, that did go on hold. That was part of the discussion that we had.
Yes, that was suspended and that was in the red line version that you were able to review on 522.
Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. I don't see any other questions.
Second.
Neil, could you call a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
I.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Motion passes six yes, zero nos. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the audience.
I have three cards for business from the audience in the room and then we'll switch online to online. First card is Mary Sharon Moore. If you can come up and please state your name and location for the record and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Van Gordon, City Councillors and City Manager. I'm Mary Sharon Moore. I'm a renter in Ward Four. I wish to address the proposed camping ordinance. With regard to the ordinance, I've been thinking about two very small words. The first word is no. No is the sound of gates slamming shut. No holds power to close access to possibilities for what does not yet exist. The other word is yes. Yes carries the sound of the gates of possibility swinging open. Yes is the sound of hope. We know which of these two words unhoused people hear the most. It is a word that invades and shapes their core identity. My closest contact with our unhoused people over the past nine years has come in eight hour shifts on bitter cold nights at Egan Warming Centers. Many do not sleep at night. So they gather in the community room around tables, playing cards, working on artwork, sharing a jigsaw puzzle, talking about their past, their hopes for their future, what they're reading. They talk about their kids, their work, what keeps them going. Community grows. So let's do the math. On average, the Springfield Egan Warming Center hosts about 60 people per night. That averages out to about 10 individuals per ward. I ask that the city council direct the city manager to work with community groups to establish safe, legal camping sites such as one or two small clusters of Conestoga huts per ward. These small clusters could serve unhoused people for post-surgery and hospice, for seniors, women and veterans, for those struggling with physical or mental health, for LGBTQ plus individuals and car camping for families. I also ask that the council direct the city manager to coordinate with ODOT, Willamah Lane and other jurisdictions to identify one or two appropriate hut sites, camping or car camping spots per ward. We're Springfield. Let's focus on building community rather than exclusion. Let's focus on rehumanizing rather than dehumanizing those for whom life is hard. Let's design this ordinance to get all of us to yes. Thank you for your consideration and your service to the people of Springfield.
Thank you. June Father Gill.
I, June Father Gill, Ward Four, 317 30th Street. I want to have her preach for me sometime. She does well, doesn't she? I've been a part of Springfield Shelter Rights Alliance since I arrived here in Springfield because we had Conestoga Huts in the parking lot at church at Ebert. So I got involved and several of us who had those huts were on that team together working on and it took a lot of work to get those ordinances, that ordinance passed even have the parking program at all. And that group was the group that did it. So I think in the spirit of this code that this ordinance that you're going to be passing in the spirit of the purpose for the ordinance, which was, if you remember, to decriminalize homeless people so who have to sleep somewhere. That was the basis of the whole thing. I think we need to remember that. And so I, I also call upon us to work together to find safe, sleeping camping spots in our community for people who need them. I think we can do that. I think we can look at each ward and say, where are some spaces that would work? I think we can work together with other entities like Willamah Lane, yes, Willamah Lane, and look at possible places. I think we can do it and I think we need to do it. I think that it would help a lot of people that are suffering, but also maybe ease some people who are worried about where homeless people are going to be. So I encourage us to look for spaces where our seniors who are unhoused, for our families who are unhoused, for our people of color who are unhoused, for our LGBTQ folks who are unhoused, for people with physical disabilities, with mental handicaps and challenges, for women who have been abused or struggle. People with developmental delays with substance abuse challenges, veterans, beds, safe space for all these people that are part of our community. Some of them graduated from Thurston. I've met some that have graduated from Springfield. We're homeless on our streets. So we're not talking about, we're talking about our neighbors. So I hope that you will direct our city manager to spend some time or the other staff working with community organizations like Carry It Forward and Springfield Rights Alliance and others to find these spaces. Thank you.
David Strahan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. It's been a while since I've been up here. I'm David Strahan. I'm a 40 plus investing member of this community. I've been doing volunteer work here, running nonprofits here, helping run the Egan Warming Center every year for more than 10 years. I feel like I have a really good feel for the direct pulse of the lower income within our community. And I know there are multiple ways that we can make this inclusive dream of Springfield a reality for those with low to no income. I'd like to revisit this ordinance that we're going to be adopting and some of the points in it that that really seemed difficult to me in my experience working with this, with this class group of residents within our city. They don't have $700 in their pocket. And they get tickets. When you get a ticket that you can't pay, you go to jail. When you're homeless and you go to jail, you lose everything. You lose your ID. You lose your site. You lose everything that any organization tried to build up for you to get you started onto the road again. Can we revisit this $700 fee? Our clients don't have that. And that means endless weekends in jail or weeks in jail where they turn out most often to be a better criminal, not a better citizen. We want these people to be inclusive within our community. We don't want them dying in fires down the street, living in hollers. We want to be able to provide ideally 10 beds within each ward for the hospice needs of the folks who are dying on our street. The disabled folks that myself, Hope on Wheels and other organizations help house are veterans in need. More particularly, I've seen people in hospice situations dying on our streets because we weren't even allowed to park a van in front of somebody's house who cares about them and allow them to die in a van. We can do better. I know we're going to accept this bill. And I think this council has an opportunity to make that bill livable within this community. One, by providing beds in every district for a minimum of 10 for the most needy of our citizens here in Springfield. We know these people die. We know we're going to find a female dead on the bench in front of Banner Bank if we don't do something. Y'all know who I'm talking about. She's been on this town homeless for years. We can do better. Let's follow this inclusiveness. Let's work on this partnership. Not by putting our homeless in jail, but by giving them an opportunity to step up, to give them some beds, some shelter space with real services, with outreach counselors so that we can make Springfield a stronger place, starting from the bottom up. We know Springfield's strong financially. Let's get everybody involved in building them up again. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I don't have any more cards. Neil, do we have anybody online?
We currently have one hand raised and that hand is Chris McAllister. Chris, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Chris McAllister and I'm with Ward Three. I'd like to lead with a couple of facts that I found from three, uh, two reports, the Menino Report from Boston University and the League of California Cities, uh, 2016. The legal California cities, uh, reports called Local Government Strategies for Addressing Homelessness, Avoiding Litigation and Doing Some Good. In that document, it talks about how there is a, the Department of Justice, uh, has an Office of Community, Community Oriented Policing Services, which has a framework for law enforcement, but is also used a lot for, uh, local cities. In the Menino Report from Boston University, it states that 78% of the 126 mayors involved in this study indicate that homelessness is a, um, an item that they have to be accountable for. 78% also indicate that homeless folks face at least moderate discrimination, more so than any other group listed, including black, Latino and transgendered. In Lane County, this is exponential as black, Latinx and LGBTQIA+ uh, community are more represented in our unsheltered population and Springfield has even more in that population. One third of the cities involved in the study have no dedicated homeless staff. Note that that was one third, not two thirds. One fourth had law enforcement doing homeless service needs such as shelter and helping with outreach services. 22% of the mayors involved stated that while funding is a problem, they were still responsible for receiving it as a city. Mayors are often forced to weigh homeless needs against business and resident complaints while managing a fragmented bureaucracy theoretically designed to manage the crisis. 11% of the mayors involved in this study stated that their needs were those, uh, were defined by those who were housed, meaning that the homeless needs were brought up against the backdrop of housed people and the needs did not actually turn out into like policy that helped the homeless people and turned out in reducing complaints. 11% use the metric of less housed and business complaints as whether or not they are doing something about homelessness. It has nothing to do with the number of sick housed, has nothing to do with the amount of, uh, people kept from jail due to their enforcement. I personally was made homeless when a student, with a, when a student resource, a school resource officer intervened in my family life, which led to the second worst beating I ever had and put me in a homeless shelter and I never came out of homeless, uh, for eight years after that. We do not need police policing. We need our city providing. We need our city to manage our populations and we need to rise to the occasion. Please give us 10 spots and six wards each. We need 60 people to start to make a dent in our population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have no other hands.
All right. Then we are done with business from the audience and I'm going to see if there's any council response before we move on. I don't see any. Next item, please.
Uh, next item is bids. Under bids is item number one, a contract award for the Justice Center roof replacement. Jim Polston is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. It's been a long time since I've been up here. I've been with the city hopping on for the past couple of decades, it seems like. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about the Justice Center roof. I'm currently working in the city manager's office as a project manager overseeing the ARPA projects that you all prioritized last year in January. One of the first projects you prioritized or wanted prioritized was to replace the Justice Center roof, which is deteriorating prematurely. Uh, the reason that it's deteriorating early is there was actually a manufacturing defect that, uh, caused the roofing membrane to break down faster than it really should have. Um, and it caused lots and lots of, um, warranties. Ours actually lasted probably longer than many, but the, and the company has actually gone out of business. So there is no manufacturer available that can honor or service the warranty. So the most prudent thing to do was to actually rebid and, and re-roof the, uh, building. So, um, when we brought this to your attention last January, we brought, brought it to you with a budget of $450,000 is what the estimate was. It turns out after a little bit closer scrutiny, there was some miscommunication and that was actually the price for just the police courts building. Uh, often that, and the police court building is actually just a little under half of the size of the Justice Center. That also includes the municipal jail and an ancillary building. So, um, we re-scoped the project and hired a roofing architect to help put together plans and specs and we rebid uh, the roof out with an estimated budget of just over a million dollars. Uh, when we rebid it, the, um, lowest responsible bid came in from, um, Evergreen Roofing of Oregon for $824,818. And, uh, we felt really good about that bid because it was, uh, for the entire facility, all three of the buildings and under estimates. Once awarded, uh, the roofing architect, myself, building officials will keep an eye on the installation to make sure that it's installed according to plan specs and up to current code. Uh, so with all that said, I am requesting that council authorize the city manager to sign contract C 3353 with Evergreen Roofing of Oregon in the amount of $824,818.
Joe.
I was curious, you threw in a specific word, you said responsible bid. Can you define what a responsible bid versus an irresponsible bid is?
Basically, it's a, a legal term in the ORS is that just means that the, the bidder has the, uh, the ability, the knowledge and the resources to perform the bid. and the resources to perform the bid as specified. In this case, the bidder met all those criteria. They have provided us with all of the city required insurance forms and the performance and payment bonds, uh, that are all required, making them a responsible bidder.
It makes sense and it's kind of a loaded question, which I typically do, but so, uh, the previous roofer, were they also responsible bidder?
They, they were, yes. And, uh, it was, it's kind of a little more complex than that because the, the actual contract we had at that time was with, um, uh, John Highland Construction, uh, using CMGC to construct the jail and, uh, they used, uh, um, quote roofing as their subcontractor for that. As part of that project, that particular roofer had to provide a two-year um, material and labor bond or, or warranty for the roof, uh, which they did and has long since passed. Um, but, uh, with, um, but they provided a material and the, the warranty after that two-year period was a material warranty, uh, on the product. And, uh, we just don't have any way to, to garner anything from a company that doesn't exist anymore.
Right. And I, I understand that. I just, and I, I support this, you know, I support the project, but I'm just curious. I'm trying to look at it to see how well protected we are this time as opposed to last time. If there's any changes made in that proposal that will protect us better for the life of that. And there, if that membrane that's being used fails and that company goes sideways, is there any protection? Are we still not protected from that?
So it's such an unusual situation that happened and the, the roofer was a national organization and they just had lots of claims all across the country that just drove them, uh, out of business. Um, it's not a very common situation. Uh, we, similar to, uh, back then, um, we have, we've bid this out, the, um, the man, if the installer is providing a two-year material and workmanship bond. The warranty however is a little longer. We're not going with, at that time it was a TPO roof. There have been, it's thermal, I wrote it down, thermoplastic polyolefin roof as opposed to what we're putting on this time, which is a PVC roof, a polyvinyl chloride roof, uh, that has a longer lifespan, um, currently and is a thicker mill. So we feel like it's a much superior product, uh, and it contains a, it comes with a twenty-year manufacturer's warranty on top of the two years that the installer will be providing.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm comfortable with those laws, but I do tell them the best we can to make sure that the twenty-year guarantee is a twenty-year guarantee and not something similar. And I get that that's being, that's unusual. It just causes me pause to have to buy two roofs in a short period of time. So she's worth, thank you.
Sure. The, the, the other thing that I might add is that, um, I mean, a, a warranty, um, was for fifteen years. So technically, if there was still a company to honor it, the roof would have been warranted through September of this year. Um, but, um, they, they went out of business, I think in two thousand and ten or eleven. So we, we've been survived.
Steve. Exactly what does a twenty-year warranty mean?
Well, basically it's the manufacturer's warranty against leaks. The, the, the product itself, um, should last that long and it was manufactured according to, uh, the specifications that they claim. So, um, if after the two-year warranty period with the installer is up, um, basically, um, if, you know, if the, something falls on and punctures the roof, that wouldn't be covered by the warranty. But if it, like what's happening here, if we happen to start noticing like that the material is starting to break down and thin out, uh, that becomes a manufacturing defect and we could, um, work with them to correct it.
And aging problems, aging.
Yes. A, a, and, uh, and I, we're finding out, I guess the industry is finding out that the TPO formulation has been a little more volatile. And that's why the, the eight, the industry is shifting more towards PVC products.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
Motion to authorize the city manager to sign a contract C two-three-five-three with Evergreen Roofing of Oregon for the amount of eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Hi.
And Counsel Pictionary.
Uh, motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is under ordinances. This is, uh, item number one, camping ordinance adoption ordinance. Number two, an ordinance repealing and replacing Springfield Municipal Code. Section five point one-three-zero related to prohibited camping on public property. Mary Bridget Smith is here for this item.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here today, um, for a second reading and potential adoption of the, uh, repeal and replacement of the camping on public property ordinance. I wanted to thank the council and the community and staff for their assistance over this past few months and we've worked on this issue. The, uh, item in your packet tonight is the, um, ordinance that the council provided direction to move forward and is ready for adoption this evening. Um, and I don't have any further information unless you have questions. Except I do have further information. I'm sorry. Um, this is, uh, hard copies of approximately six emails from the public that came in since the time of the public hearing to the city attorney's email address. And I wasn't sure if the council had received them. So they're just, uh, emails from members of the public about, um, the, uh, camping ordinance and wanted to make sure that you had copies of those.
I don't know exactly what these are, but a lot of the ones I got was, was there's places, it specifies where you can't go, but they, they need places where they can go. And that's not old enough. And I sort of agree with them on that.
Yeah, I think the next part of this, once the ordinance is adopted, is to work on enforcement and communication and trying to figure that out.
Uh, Victoria.
Yeah. And I think we also have to keep in mind that the HSC, the Human Services Commission is where we put our funds and they are working on the housing and houseless stuff. Um, I'm still a little confused on the fee though, because I, we had a discussion about the fine. And I think we all agreed that seven hundred and twenty, up to seven hundred and twenty dollars was a lot. And we had a discussion as to what that was going to be. I had suggested around a hundred or two hundred dollars. And then when it came back, it was because the wording is up to seven hundred and twenty dollars. So I'm trying to find out who, who decides that? Like, is that up to the, the officer? Is that up to the judge? Who, who decides if it's going to be twenty-five bucks or seven hundred bucks? Or does it have to do with like the number of times a person has been, you know, that, I think that's important to kind of understand.
Yeah. So the language in the ordinance before you is the consistent language you, we use throughout the code, the up to seven hundred and twenty dollars. That decision is made by the municipal court judge.
Okay.
When someone is before them and they can take those circumstances into account for that individual. We don't have like a graduated, um, set schedule. Like if you have so many of these citations, it multiplies by a certain amount or anything like that. So it's case by case, person by person, by the court.
Okay. So the judge can say twenty-five bucks if he wants to.
Yeah. And they also have other, um, you know, they do have, um, options like work crew and other types of, um, sentencing uh, options to get at, um, getting the, um, to address the fine amount.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Corey.
Thank you. So I just have a few things to say before we get to the vote. Um, one, I just want to express my appreciation to you for all of the work that went into this. Cause I know, um, from the very beginning that we were here and then we were there. Um, and I know that you've worked really hard on this and I just really appreciate it. Um, also, when we first started having this conversation, I remember saying that this was an opportunity for us to, um, make things better or make things worse. I'm not entirely convinced that we're making things better yet. And I do appreciate that we're going to have more time to talk about what the next, where people could possibly be knowing that we, we have a liability to do that. Um, the reason that I will not be voting for it is really based on that fee. You know, we had that conversation. Um, we were getting down there under a hundred bucks and everyone agreed. And then it's now back to being seven hundred and fifty dollars, which I truly, to the, the core of my soul, believes in unreasonable poverty tax on people who are unhoused, who might be caught in the wrong area. Um, so that is just, I wanted to say both of those things. One, you've done a great deal of work and I appreciate that. And we've been in connection with other city partners and also I am not going to be able to approve this as it is.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. I, let's go back to the fee for a second. What other factors does the ju, does the judge have to take into account before they, before they impose the fee? Isn't there a set of? Isn't there a?
Well, the judge has, um, discretion to, um, assess fines and in their courtroom. So they can take into factors such as ability to pay, the circumstances of the case, what the person has said at the, um, hearing, those types of things.
Victoria.
And, and I have to agree with Counsel Rodley that i- it's unreasonable to think that somebody who's homeless is going to have seven hundred and twenty dollars. Like that's to me is, is just wrong. And I think that we had discussed that and I just don't understand why it changed because of the wording up to, um, I, I feel like that's something that needs to change. I really do.
All right. Um, so I guess when, when we think about this through the fall, right? You're going to come back with vehicles in the fall and you're probably going to come back with a list of changes that, that, that are in the fall at that point, right?
Yeah, I think what I'm anticipating now is, um, that the council, um, you know, if the council votes to approve this ordinance or it gets approved, then it becomes effective, uh, in the summer. Um, the city will work on, um, at a staff level with enforcement, with the police department and, uh, the municipal court to get you more information about how that would work. I also think in that time, um, it's very likely that other jurisdictions.
We apparently lost, uh, Counsel Pictionary.
Oh.
Uh, all right. I think you're back now. All right. Um, Mary Bridget was talking about next steps and then I was going to see if anyone. So go ahead.
Uh, so once we, um, and we'll also research her for the summer, uh, regulations involving vehicles, um, because we found in our data that about half of the, um, camping citations in Springfield involve vehicles. The regulations for that are a little bit different and the nature of that is different. So I want to look at that separately. Um, also anticipating that other jurisdictions, you know, we're also going through this together, but in different phases. And there may be jurisdictions who learn things ahead of time or are challenged on this. And depending on what happens with them, I think it's very likely I could be back to you in the fall or at a later date to say, hey, we might need to change our ordinance X, Y and Z. Or for example, you know, some other change, whether it relates to the fine or location or time, time regulations or manner regulations. So that's what I'm thinking and going to see in the next, um, what you'll see in the next few months for this project.
All right, Joe.
Thank you. I appreciate all your work for sure. Mary Bridget, you've done a great job. I believe it's very well written. And, um, I just wanted to put out there that I very much understand what the seven hundred twenty-five and what the terms up to means. And that it is allows the judge the flexibility to, if you have repeat offenders that aren't getting the message, for example, where they try to look, courts gives ability to courts work with the person saying, okay, here's twenty-five dollar fee. The person ignores it or doesn't satisfy the court. It gives them more options as opposed to, uh, you know, it's like getting a traffic ticket and you get a maximum amount of fine. You're not going to get that much fine against you. That's how the system works. So I, I understand what those two words mean up to. That does not mean they're going to get the ceiling price. They're going to get hammered seven hundred dollars the first time they show up in court. So I'm, I'm totally comfortable with that. Support it. Thank you.
And I think that's, and I think that's a key component here. And I know we're kind of working through this and we're going to go through a couple of, or, we're going to go through a couple of revisions. My reading of that is that a first time offender, right, should not be getting a seven hundred and twenty, twenty dollar fine. Um, now I do think based on our level of concern here, then, you know, and I know the vote's going to shake out the way, way it's going to shake out. That whatever we're actually assessing from a fine perspective, either needs to come back to probably finance and judiciary and have them check in on that. Because if the, you know, the judges work for us, right? So if everybody's going up to the maximum without some sort of explanation that, you know, like a first time offender should not be getting this. And it isn't, and let's be clear, I don't think it's any of our intent that somebody that, that somebody who, you know, in a first time situation gets seven hundred and twenty dollars. The intent here is to let, let the judge look at all the factors accordingly and assess a reasonable, a reasonable amount, you know, a reasonable amount of money. Right? So I know that there's a, a lot of concern here. I just want to make sure we're saying that on the record. And that if, you know, Mary Bridget, you can communicate with the judge and the next time finance and judiciary comes back, ask them, ask him to basically come, you know, because I know you're going to chat with them about enforcement anyway. Ask them to come back and just check in with, with, with that subcommittee about what's actually happening.
Will do.
Thank you.
I had originally supported two hundred and sort of was told that it was seven hundred to be a sliding scale up to that. I think I was wrong in doing that. So I'm going to be look, look into it again and I hope that we revisit that.
All right.
So I would like to make a motion if we're ready. I'd like to make a motion to adopt organs number two.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
No.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Yes.
And Counsel Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, one no. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is under business from the city council. Um, item number one is committee appointments, mayor, council committee assignments. And Senator Van Gordon, this is your item.
Yes. And we don't have to take any action on this tonight. Um, what's in the packet is, um, a redistribution of committee assignments. It doesn't impact a whole lot of folks. It just simply puts Beth on there. Um, and I've talked to the, I've talked to the folks that, uh, were, were impacted, like Michelle's giving up Lane Act and that's going to Beth. And then I believe the, I may have given you the art commission too, now that I'm not looking at it. So this is, this is an opportunity to ask, just take a quick look. You know, and, um, ask any questions that you might have.
I was temporarily doing arts commission. Have I been removed from there?
Yes. Or you can go anytime. I hear you have a, you have an in, um, what I look, what I, what I looked at is we all, like, everybody took like three extra committees, um, when Leonard had to resign. And, you know, having, having an extra set of hands around and basically allowed folks to, you know, distribute the workflows a little bit better. All right. I think we're good there. Um, so AJ, can you communicate to the ODOT folks about, I think that's the only intergovernmental one on there? Thank you. Exciting, please.
Any other business from the council?
Yes.
Counsel Rodley, do you have an opinion on things?
Like, wait, wait, this is this time. Uh, I had two things to say. One, um, this weekend on Saturday, I went to the Wear Orange event at Island Park, which was here in Springfield. Um, so a lot of our neighbors were there, which was the goal of that event was to bring awareness around common sense gun legislation and to end gun violence. And it was organized by Moms Demand Action and was also commemorating the nineteen ninety-eight Thurston School shooting. Um, I was very appreciative of having this event in Springfield because we don't always get to have these big events that are so impactful. And people were very grateful to have, um, representation from Springfield, the sake of me and our Senator Przyansky was there. Um, I also wanted to, I really appreciate that we made a proclamation around Pride Month. And I know I've pointed this out before, and I just want to use this opportunity to highlight that, um, you know, pride is a protest and that we still have a long way to go. And I particularly, um, focused on, um, you know, hate crimes and how LGBTQ youth experience homelessness and housing instability. And I just wanted to share that in two thousand and twenty-one, there were thirty, fifty-one reported hate crimes in Oregon motivated by sexual orientation and another thirteen that were based on gender identity. And these numbers doubled from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one. So if we think things are getting better, things are not necessarily getting better. Twenty-eight percent of LGBTQ plus youth experience homelessness or housing instability, according to the Trevor Project. Nearly half of all LGBTQ youth are seriously considered attempting suicide. And nearly two in five of our youth say that they live in a community that isn't accepting of LGBTQ plus people. And these are also from the two thousand and twenty-two Trevor Project. So I just wanted to point out that yes, we are celebrating Pride Month and there is a reason for that. So for giving me a chance to read that into the record.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Next item, please.
Uh, next item is business from the city manager. Item number one is the intergovernmental agreement for right-of-way services with ODOT for the Mill Street South, A Street to Centennial Boulevard Springfield Project. The Kruger is here for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We right now have completed the thirty percent design.
We, right now, have completed the thirty percent design for the Mill Street Reconstruction Project and we are working on the sixty percent design, which is geared to be completed in August. So we are hoping to still go out to bid in construction season of twenty-four. So the phase that we're at right now is the right-of-way acquisition phase in parallel with the design process. And so because we are not quite yet federally certified, which we are just about to start our first federal certification project. So we won't need these right-of-way services in the future from ODOT, but for this federal project, we do. So this is the right-of-way acquisition services IGA with ODOT. So we are ready to get that signed and continue that process.
Are there any questions? All right, before I take the motion, every time you come back with Mill Street, I get more excited. You know, if we talk about roads in this community, there's at least fifteen people that say Mill Street and it's coming, folks. All right.
You authorize the city manager to go change and execute the IGA for right-of-way services with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Mill Street South A Street Centennial Boulevard project.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Pictionary.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Thank you.
Uh, next item.
Next item, please.
Um, next item is, uh, item number two, potential downtown project, Ally Camp is here for this item.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. I am here to talk about a draft exclusive negotiation, negotiating agreement proposed with OB companies. OB companies is responsible for Fifth Street Market in Eugene and the most recent Fifth Street Market expansion. The developer approached the city of Springfield in late two thousand and twenty-two with interest in three tax lots of city-owned property and formerly known as the Museum Parking Lot on Main Street. See attachment one in your packet for a map. And attachment, or attachment one for the letter of interest and attachment two for the vicinity map. The developer has discussed a mixed-use development focused on residential. An exclusive negotiating agreement gives both the city of Springfield and OB companies time to perform due diligence on the property, the proposed development and its impacts. It is a non-binding agreement. The draft agreement proposes a one-year due diligence period with two ninety-day extensions. Peaking a little bit into the future with mutual agreement between parties, this ENA would lead to a memorandum of understanding, which would include terms and conditions around timeframe for delivery of a future project. But that's way down the future. Implications of how, of an ENA would be that the lot continues to be used as a public parking lot during the terms of the agreement. That OB companies has access to the lot to complete due diligence items provided three days' business notice. And that the city may not sell the properties to any other party during the term of the agreement. OB companies letter of intent defines two items, a property tax exemption for housing and shared parking. This ENA does not commit the city to administration of a future tax exemption program or share any of the parking spaces. During the ENA term, two of the city's tasks would be to consider a property tax exemption program and conduct a parking analysis to better understand feasibility and impacts of provision of use agreements for the adjacent city hall parking and overall what downtown parking impacts would be with the new development on supply and demand. Our last parking study was conducted in two thousand and ten for downtown. Two other small items worth mentioning in the city's scope of work, which is on the last page of the draft ENA. Identify dispositioning process for the property should be reached at that point in the future and coordinate for impacts to the Emerald Arts Center mural. Both of these items are significant in terms of process and outcome and spending time on them during this due diligence period will determine if and how to proceed. A brief back-of-the-nap can estimate for the city's commitments, which are on that last page in the packet. They include appraisal, a title report, a survey, a phase one, and this parking use analysis anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars. These items are specifics to the property, not the project, and can be utilized for future work on the property or in the downtown core. Last item, the action requested says to approve the ENA or deny substantially in this form. We are still making small edits back and forth with the developer, none of which will impact the integrity of the agreement in front of you.
Are there any questions? Victoria.
I just want to say that when we start talking about multi-use projects in downtown, I get excited, so.
I think we all get excited about projects. All right, Joe.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement with OB companies substantially in this form for a due diligence period of three hundred and sixty days on free tax lots of city-owned property downtown.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Neil.
Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Pictionary.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
Just a quick comment. Wanted to thank the city council for voting yes on this. I'm excited about the potential of having OB company develop in our city. Award-winning developer with a proven track record and have, has really changed. Just had such a skill in developing a sense of community and place-making and is really on point with what this council has been setting forward for a number of years, starting with the Renaissance of our downtown and I, I see this as a further, you know, just a, it will be a catalyst for further development improvements in our city and like Council and Dorial, I too am excited about a mixed-use development. Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Next item is business from the city attorney. Item number one is review of city council policy, operating policies and procedure. Mary Bridget Smith is here for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm back. This item is your annual review of your operating policies and procedures, which is essentially your rulebook for how you do your business. Under the charter, you're required to review your operating policies on an annual basis. So this is an opportunity for the council to review. I have one specific recommendation for a change, which is to sort of modernize and incorporate the language about media being at executive sessions. The city had a standalone resolution and policy for many years. But since it's standalone, sometimes you forget about it and should be, would be better if it were incorporated into your rules. The language from in your packet is very close to the League of Oregon Cities' recommendation for this matter. Generally, media are allowed to come into executive sessions. It's just that the, you know, kind of landscape as media has changed in the recent years in terms of internet and bloggers or other types of media that report on city business. So I'm asking that the council make the change to the operating policies. I'm anticipating that after your retreat, there may be additional changes to the operating policies and we can incorporate that into your next change. I do plan on bringing information on your the boards and commission subcommittee that met a few months ago that you would have at your retreat. If you think of other topics, just let me know and I'd be happy to prepare information on those.
Yeah, and I think that was the, that was the big question. It's just to remind folks that there's a big conversation about board appointments that we've wanted to have. We just got to get to the fall where we've got a little bit of time to hash out some of those questions. Any other questions? Neil.
Uh, Mayor, I neglected to read the resolution into the record. Sorry, resolution number three is a resolution adopting amendments to the council operating policies and procedures.
Thank you.
Approves the resolution number three?
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Pictionary.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos.
Great, thank you.
Next item, please.
Any other items?
No, no, no other business. Thank you.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.